Welcome Nottingham to the Monday, January 6th, 2025 Selectment's meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there something we can ask Betsy? On the, on our payroll, whatever, one of the bills was two bills we sent out at the beginning of December, and I think we just had another one for the recycling center, was to clear trash bags.
Yes.
Those $600, those two bills reached for like 300 something dollars. Is that for the year that we're spending those trash bags? That's not, I mean, I don't.
No, they, they order them every.
Every quarter?
Every six weeks or so.
I think the total, that line item is like four, $5,000. Four or five thousand.
Just for the clear bags that we stick to recycling stuff.
Because they have to be, they have to be a certain.
They have to be a certain mill and a certain brand, because what happens is the recyclables are being put in the bags and they're bailing them, they're bailing them all together.
In the bags before we are trying to empty them.
This is what I was referring to at the last meeting, that the, the containers aren't being properly cleaned out, so they're getting laundry detergent and oil-based salad dressings and everything that leaks, so.
Milk.
Yeah.
That's probably the bigger one.
Well, only for. Just so people know that that's another big expense it costs to run the recycling center that's in there. Well, just this month, we was, we had two.
Two orders of them.
Two orders, like 300, one was 330, two, one was three, I don't, I don't have.
The total line item was like 5,000 for a year.
I just, for bags, it just seemed to be a lot of money for us to.
For bags for recycling.
Bags for recycling, right.
So what they were doing before is trying to bundle them together without the bags, but then they would.
Fall apart.
Fall apart.
Oh yeah, I just bring it up as an expenditure so people know, you know, because if you don't see that, how much it costs, that's another factor for our recycling center.
So is there something that you would like me to get from Betsy?
Well, I just, if you just explain that's, I'm good enough with the answer we had right now, I just didn't know if, I never looked into the actual expenditure, I mean, I seen it on there, but it really caught my eye today when I saw two expenditures on that where I said, whoa, this is, which made me ask the question about, about it, so. All right. That's all I had for about what I read on there. And if something else, is there anything else we can go for approval for payroll and for the manifest?
Make a motion to approve the payroll for 1-6, 2025, accounts payable for 1, 1-6, 25 payroll for 1-7.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
To, there's one check.
That should probably be held.
Yes.
Yes, I see, I waited and signed it.
How does that work?
Excluding that one check?
Yeah.
Make the motion to exclude that one check.
All right. Okay.
There's, it was a hundred.
amend the motion to exclude the one check for the deposit of new greater out of the accounts payable of 1-6, 2025.
Second as amended.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion unanimous. Questions on minutes and the non-publics.
The one non-public shows attendance was just like copy pasted, had Matt there, he wasn't there.
On the 16th.
What's that?
For the December 16th.
I, I don't remember which day it was.
Yeah.
I think he was there for six, he was there for one and not the other.
Yeah, it was the 23rd.
23rd, he was not.
Gotcha.
You'd had it right for the voting, but.
All right.
To, to come out, having, going, coming out is not correct. That was the only thing I had. Minutes.
Do one more on here. I make a motion to approve the minutes for the, public minutes for December 16th, 2024, and non-public for December 16th, 2024.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for December 23rd, 2024, for non-public and public.
Would that change? Would the one change?
With the change of removing Matt Sherrill from attendance to the non-public.
Second that.
A motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Matt Sherrill abstained.
There we go. We're going to go boards and committees, I'll start off with the planning board, there is a meeting on Wednesday, there's two cases coming up, and I will not be able to attend. If one of you guys want to jump in and say hi, want the welcome to, you can make it, this Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Yep.
Like two days from now?
Yep. Again, it's, if you're not there, if there's, whatever, we're not there, it's just two cases, but it's, I just want you to know, I won't be able to attend that meeting. So if one of you guys want to discuss later on, it doesn't matter.
I probably can, I don't know.
I got budget on Thursday night, so.
Go to the meeting again.
Right.
I would, I mean.
Yeah, I, I most likely can.
Because I just have to inform the chair tomorrow that I won't be there, so I was just going to let them know if somebody decided that could make it, I was just going to let them know on my email. Other boards and committees?
I can do CIP, so CIP did meet last Thursday, actually, I think we met like.
Twice, you met the 19th.
Twice since the, we last talked about it, but we basically, not basically, we did finalize the CIP and the article for the town report, so that is done, we are going to have a meeting February, like after deliberative sessions to kind of like go through some housekeeping things like if we want to change like the, the capital amounts and things like that, just kind of do some housekeeping for, prep for like next year.
Okay, good.
For budget, we met last Thursday, and I'm not going to steal Ellen's thunder, we'll go over some of the changes that were recommended by the budget committee, and then we are meeting again on this Thursday to be presented with the final school board, school district budget and warrant articles.
All right. Ready for the town administrator's report?
Absolutely.
For general announcements, the town budget hearing is scheduled for next Tuesday, January 14th, in this room at 7 o'clock, that's when the budget committee will be going over the, the budget that they're recommending to put forward for deliberative session and hopefully future ballot question, so that is again at 7:00 PM, that's when the public can come in and hear it and ask any questions that they have about.
Will that be here?
Yes, in this building, conference room one. The school budget hearing is also scheduled for next week, and that will be on Thursday, January 16th, 7 o'clock, conference room one here. The snow date for both, if there is inclement weather on either date, is the following Tuesday, January 21st, same time and place. The town's deliberative session is going to be held on Saturday, February 1st, at 9:00 AM at the Nottingham School, snow date for that is Saturday, February 8th, if we have to cancel. The school's deliberative session is going to be held on Wednesday, February 5th, at 6:00 PM, and their snow date is Friday, February 7th, same time and place. And just a reminder to all, the 2024 second half property tax bills are due tomorrow, January 7th, the tax collector did not extend her hours this year, and it was partly because there was a period of about six weeks between the billing, so it just didn't seem like the, the need was there. There are payment options available for people to pay online, and obviously in person, they could drop checks, mail checks, all of that, so just a friendly reminder. As far as action items.
What time is she open tomorrow?
She is open tomorrow from, thanks for putting me on the spot, 9 o'clock, 9 to noon. For action items tonight, the contract with our independent contractor, Jane Saunders of Saunders Research, or Saunders Searches LLC, that's the company that does all the property searches related to the tax leaning and deeding, we have an annual contract with her, so that is up for renewal, it's in your signature file, so I'd be looking for a motion for us to enter into that contract as we've done in years past. Saunders Research, or Saunders, Saunders Searches LLC.
Do I make a motion to approve the contract with Saunders Services Searches LLC? Yeah, somebody sells seashells.
I'll second the motion to approve the contract with Saunders Searches LLC.
Okay, I'm not going to repeat it, but we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to go off track from my report a little bit, just to give you a little bit of history before I get into the next action item, one of the items that I was going to have before you tonight is, according to the town subdivision regulations, for major subdivisions requiring a performance guarantee be posted, you, the board of selectmen, actually set the amount of that performance bond, so we have the subdivision that is going in on 156, it's going to be Spruce Peak Drive, Potuckaway Ridge subdivision, it's a Joe Falzone project, and the land developer on it is Chinburg, I think they're out of Stratum, so this has obviously been, through the planning board, received necessary approvals and is well underway, they are getting to the point where they're applying for building permits, or very close to within the next week, I think Dale might actually have received one of them so far, before he can issue a building permit, we have to approve the performance bond amount, so initially, when Chinburg took over the project, they provided the town with a statement of values, what the cost of their site work was going to be to build the road and do all of that necessary work, so that had been forwarded to our third-party engineer, which is CMA, for their review, CMA has reviewed it, came back with a couple of differences in calculation using New Hampshire DOT formulas and other major projects that they've been worked, they've worked on recently, so there is a difference of opinion between our engineer and the developer as to what this performance bond amount shall be. So according to the subdivision regulations, the basis for determining the performance guarantee shall be 100% of the cost of all required site improvements plus any other funds necessary for the completion of ancillary work as conditioned by the board's approval. I am going to, I wasn't able to connect with Steve Rollins today, but I was going to have him look at the two items that are in question, which are mainly cost of excavation and the paving, and then also get your opinion as to whether or not you might want to get a third opinion on this, since there is a variation. I did go through, when CMA provided me with their mock-up of the statement of values, they just went through and changed the unit price, so I haven't calculated it out across, initially, it looked like it was a small amount, but then as I started doing preliminary calculations, it looks like it's a rather significant difference between the two opinions, so obviously, I don't want to recommend you to put forward an amount for a performance bond that would be inaccurate, so I guess I'm looking for some advice as to how you would like to proceed, do you want me to get another set of eyes on this, or would the highway director's opinion suffice for you to be able to set the amount for the performance bond so we can keep this project rolling?
What's the difference?
I don't have the exact net difference, but the two main items were on, like excavation, they have a unit price of $5 per unit, where, and CMA is recommending 15, some of the larger variations come from the paving, like a top course, 112 versus 150, binder course, 103 versus 150, crushed gravel, $31 per cubic yard versus 60, bank run gravel, $22 per, versus 50, so when you're looking at the amounts that they're estimating and carrying it forward, I mean, if I did a rough calculation, I think it was, I was well over $400,000 difference between the two, and we're talking, the initial estimate was over 1.2 million.
And there's, so there's bunches of units per these.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a very, especially the, for the excavation, it's a third of the cost, what their estimated market cost, so I guess, I mean, if they can explain.
So, so CMA has gone through and looked at it, and the way that they explained it is from past projects of similar size.
Chinburg.
Oh, Chinburg, yes, so she did, my point of contact with Chinburg actually provided me with infrastructure project cost analysis, I just sent it over to you, because I, it was an attachment from an email that I got from her on Friday that I had overlooked, so I mean, that comes in at 1.5, so there is still a lot of discussion to take place here, but as far as, you know, coming to an agreement on what that performance bond amount should be, where would you like to go? And I obviously don't want to hold it up until your meeting on January 27th, so that would be part two of when I get this information.
Has Mr. Falzone seen the CMA report?
I don't believe he has, it goes to, they have their own engineering firm, I think it's Beal Associates, so they've seen it, they, they were the ones that actually recommended our highway director, our road agent, take a look at those costs and see if they're in line, and then Chinburg is the land developer, I don't know if Falzone's, I don't think he's looped into the email correspondence.
I find it hard to believe that we're, I mean, there's something wrong with being that far off, $100,000 off, you know, 50,000, hey, debatable, but that seems a number to be far off. I don't want to see the town paying for a third party.
Well, they don't anyways, all of the engineering oversight is built back to.
Right, so I just want to make sure, right, because I mean, we built one, so we got to make sure that they're okay with building it, building back them a second time, it's not, it's not common practice, in the years past, we haven't really had that, I don't think we've ever brought upon this amount of difference of CMA towards what.
If we just set the bond at the higher amount, like, is the cost difference to them that much?
It's, it's the amount that they have to post the performance bond for, and it's not released until complete.
No, he's saying the dollar amount, the additional $400,000 for the bond, what's that going to cost them versus paying for another engineer. I guess that's up to them, though.
Yeah, I mean, they, they put the full amount, the one, the full amount of the bond into basically escrow or whatever it is to help there.
Yes.
So they don't want to put all of it in, if they don't need to.
Yeah.
I'd be kind of curious of the delay, right, if you're trying to build houses, just pick the higher one, just seems like the safety net.
That's why Mr. Falzone has always been, in years past, very good at working with the town, so I find it, I'd like to hear if he had an objection to saying absolutely no, he's not paying it, which I doubt for a 16 lot subdivision, in the end result of what, where it is that he'd have that much, I mean, whether he's willing, that number's willing to change to make it more of a meet you halfway, or, you know, bring it up to that closer to the CMA number.
I think there's so much blasting, there, there's a lot of work that has to be done on the initial thing, and it seems like the higher one, even if they're getting, they're saying, well, we use these contractors, so we're getting a deal or something like that, so this is our cost, but then the other guys are like, this is what we think it's going to cost, so.
It's a pretty big deal, though.
It is a big.
This money, the money they put up is what's protecting the town.
Correct.
So it's very important that we get.
And we are doing construction oversight through the entire process, so that we are getting monitoring reports as they're, they're developing to make sure that when it comes to the town for acceptance, that we can at least say yes, we did monitor the project, it was built to the, the town's road standards.
I just, I mean, I feel comfortable with the higher one, I know that they might be.
You mean the CMA number?
Potentially.
Right, but we got to get them to say that they're okay with it too.
Right.
Because right now, they're, 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 they're a lot less money, where they might say, we don't agree with that number.
But as Matt said, that how much does it cost to get another third-party estimate and time delays, what's that going to cost them as opposed to?
Again, going back to the thing is, we haven't had a response back from them of saying, are they willing, they could say, sure, we'll go with that number, and then we're done, conversation's over, I think we need to hear from the applicant, the builder. I don't know if, I mean, Steve Rollins is well informed on material costs from his past experience, but.
And they might have a better idea now that they've been working on that road for a while now, what the end cost is going to be, possibly.
This is all recent, this was all in the past week.
Oh.
So my thing is, we should have a conversation, should be with the, with them at a response back, I mean, we don't know what they're saying about it, they could agree, just to keep the project moving and going, because I'm sure they don't want to see a delay.
So should we recommend the higher amount, and then if they have an objection to it, then we bring it back?
To our next meeting.
Yeah.
Which would be the delay anyway.
Right, it would be the delay anyway, because they're, right.
I mean, if we pick the lower number, then they get stuck on something or.
Right, and we don't want to get, we don't want to be, you know, the ones that something happens.
It's kind of like, we'll keep it going, but it's going to have to be this much.
Right.
Well, that's what we're basically telling them now with the CMA, CMA report, whatever, this is like, this is what we think you owe us, but they came out with a different number.
What does CMA stand for?
An engineering company, CMA engineers.
I, you know, I should know.
So where does this bond money go at the end, it just goes back to them if everything goes cleanly?
Most of them will place, most of them will post a insurance bond, so we hold the original certificate until the project's been completed, and then we release it back to them.
Right, so it's an insurance bond, and he's on the dollar anyway.
So it costs, it costs a value.
There's a bunch of different methods that we can accept a bond, we can accept a surety bond, we can accept a cash payment or line of credit, but most of these larger projects are by insurance bond.
So it's going to be whatever that difference of insurance bond money is to pay for X or Y.
Which still seems like it would be pennies on the dollar, but for $100,000, it's a lot of pennies, just saying.
Exactly, yes.
They're not going to actually be physically putting $400,000 inside of it, so this is the first in my time that we've actually, with all developments, that we've actually been having this discussion.
And I'm not sure how, I mean, I think the last major subdivision was Maple Ridge, so we're going back, what, six, seven, eight years, maybe 10, from when the subdivision approval was.
For a performance bond?
Yeah, so this is our, our first, and of course, this is why we're coming back to it, is processes have changed and staff has changed.
Which he hasn't even gotten that one back, because they denied accepting the road, so.
Right.
That one's still held up.
I don't think it would hurt to have Steve Rollins take a look at it, but.
I don't think he needs to look at it, I think he just needs to look at the figures, I mean, so, so basically.
Do you have to pick a number, or it's going to be a two-week delay?
I, I think we should.
Three-week delay, the 27th, correct.
Right.
So.
So we can approve it on the board to say we approved the number that the CMA approves?
Right.
If they want to object to it, then they're holding up their project.
So they're, yes, yes, because their objection is their numbers that they're actually paying for the road infrastructure install, that's the one that came in at like 1.5, so there is automatic, there, there's a, there's a difference already between the original statement of value that they proposed versus what they're.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Yeah, this is the one, this is the original statement of value with a mock-up from CMA.
So 1.25, and that's 1.54, so $250,000 difference.
So I mean, that somewhat splits the difference.
Which, this isn't the CMA report?
No, no, that's their, that's their contractor that's doing the road and infrastructure install.
Right, so they're already $250,000 above what they even thought it was going to be to begin with, and then they're already higher than that, and CMA is like, we really think you're going to end up here, just seems like the safe number.
Yeah.
Because they're already way off. Oh, giant ledge here, I guess we need to blast.
And there is.
Right?
So we want to make a motion to stick with the CMA report, keep that as the number?
What was that total dollar amount for CMA?
We don't have the total dollar amount.
Is the motion to just accept the CMA report?
CMA is the higher of the two.
Right.
Correct. See it in here.
Yeah, I don't see a total, I just.
They are.
Okay.
I mean, the difference in the common excavation alone is 400,000.
Yeah, I mean, some of the numbers that he's saying are being quoted over there just seem low, and maybe it is a developer deal, but you don't know if something's going to change or.
Right.
So the email on December 2nd to you from Josh, do you have that? I think that might have their total in there. CMA's total.
It just says attached is our review of Beal's construction estimate, please review and let us know if you have any questions, if not, please forward to Beal's. And he provided me with this.
So, yeah, I mean, if you're looking here, Chinburg's saying.
Can I see that with the email? Can I see that?
This one.
Well, they're just saying they disagree, is there any room to negotiate? And then he replies back why he thinks he's right.
Yes.
And expressed in the email, the board would like to stick with the CMA report. And expressed in the email that the board would like to stick with the CMA report.
Because we couldn't pick, I mean, us picking a number randomly in the middle. If CMA comes up at two and we have one at 150, like, how can we justify just being like, oh, I guess 175 sounds like a good number. I don't know.
That's, that's just compromise. I like the plan to just go with the upper one. And if they balk at it, then it's the delay that we, you know, we do another review. I would think it'd be on him to say, I need to talk with CMA. This is what, why we're saying this right here.
Well, I, I've already forwarded all of that to them.
But just.
Right. So they just need to sit down and say, hey.
He explains his is based on open market bidding. They're saying, okay, but we have a sweetheart deal because we use the same contractors for everything. And we're getting it super cheap. And it's like, okay, but.
If they have a fallout with their contractor or something happens, then.
Right.
Things change and that happens.
It's going to be way more of a project than they bargained for.
And so you forwarded that to Chinberg on Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And she called up immediately and said, you know, this is, this is literally what we're paying them.
Which is already $250,000 higher than what they originally thought. But you don't have a CMA number to see where they are.
Correct.
On that one, or is it?
That is the CMA number. It just doesn't have a total.
They adjusted the unit price for.
I'll throw it into a spreadsheet and figure out what the exact difference is, but, or actually, I'll make CMA do it because that's part of their analysis.
You're saying this was previous and then they went through and.
Yeah.
And angled these numbers.
Correct. But they didn't carry the totals across.
So who's Beal's associates?
That's their engineer.
Make a motion to go with the CMA valuation for bond posting for the, Patacaway Ridge subdivision.
I'll second.
Perfect. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let us know what they say.
Okay. Um, related to that same subdivision, we have two existing properties that, um, are actually at the start of that road. And they have Raymond Road addresses, but technically they will now be on what's known as Spruce Peak Drive. That's the new road name that you approved for that subdivision. Um, so in your signature folder, there are two applications for voluntary change of address with E911 addressing. If somebody voluntarily will accept a change of address, we don't have to go through public hearing requirements, which is, it makes the process a lot easier. But for, um, to kind of streamline their delivery process and package handling from here forward, once that development gets really rolling and developed. The 215 Raymond Road, which is known as map 69 lot 16, would be changed to 2 Spruce Peak Drive. And 209 Raymond Road, map 69 lot 19, would be changed to through 3 Spruce Peak Drive. Uh, both owners have signed that voluntary change of address form. It just requires your approval. Um, Dale has verified them through the 911 addressing system for no, no conflicts. So I just need a motion to approve those two.
It's okay to do these this far in advance of the road being done?
They're, I think they're already on it, right?
Yeah.
They're already on.
They're already on, on there. The road is already part of the subdivision.
It used to be like the driveway to houses.
Yeah, I know, but.
His question basically, if I don't correct, right.
If the road doesn't develop.
Finished the bond yet.
Right.
So we.
If you would like to hold.
We can just table this because it's not going to make a difference for.
Right. I mean, I can understand them wanting to get this taken care of because it's probably a long process, but.
What, the change of your?
Change of address.
But those are just, I guess for E911 purposes right now, the fire department and police department are fine finding the two addresses as they are now.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not, right. That's what I'm worried about is it, it getting ahead of the E911 system.
Gotcha. Well, they're already tentatively in there. They won't get individual, numbers until the lots themselves start being developed, until there's a building permit on file for the individual lot. But the road itself, I think Dale's already initiated that change to the 911 database. Spruce Peak Drive.
Thank you.
Is there a sign at the end of the room?
Uh, they were ordering it.
Okay.
Yeah. Chinberg was ordering it.
I, I guess once that gets approved, maybe that's when you do this.
The bond?
What, no, once the road actually gets approved in E911. So once we get confirmation that it's there.
I think it has, but I will verify that if you want to leave it tabled until the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't think tabling this is a big deal for the fact of a two week window.
Yeah.
Right.
And that way we make sure that their bond gets there so that the road, we know that the project has the backing to be completed with the money, so.
Okay. Okay, so I'll add that to the next meeting.
So John, you decided going with the higher number?
We, for the bond that we were talking about, yes, we want them to pay what, we want them to go with the CMA number, not their number.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, just an open question to see if you're ready to take action. Is there any progress on the legal services RFP as far as awarding? Company for that? Or do you want to keep it on as an action item? Any of you additional firms? Any other options?
Personally, I would go with Drummond Woodson based upon the size.
I, that was my preference as well. Um, I do like the fact that it's not necessarily a contract and we can just do this whenever, you know? So, whatever that means for us to hire them as we need to or not or.
I think having an attorney live and onsite at the deliberative session is important for the town. I mean, I know it's, it's nice that somebody's available on the phone, but I think that can be difficult because you've got a couple hundred people in the room and then there's a question.
And the interpretation of what was actually said over the phone.
Right.
So who are you going with?
We've needed that legal counsel. Just about at every meeting I've ever been to, it's.
Right.
They've already been there.
Right.
I would just be concerned about the access. They're so big, but I mean, as long as somebody's replying to us, but, it sounds like that individual had quite a few towns, was covering quite a few towns.
But he also had her, too.
Right. And they, yeah, she was like really the other lady from the other.
Lea.
Firm would have been like completely out of pocket.
Right.
Yeah, she didn't have the support.
Well, he's the parent I was working with.
Right.
Yeah. Turning five.
I'm going to watch you guys make that call. You'll be working with them.
I mean, I'm good with them.
Well, whoever.
I was more than happy with Drummond. There's an advantage sometimes to a small firm. It's also a disadvantage.
Right. And I've just found the disadvantages outweighed. I get what you're saying. You call, you get somebody's cell phone number. You can reach them on a Saturday at three o'clock in the afternoon, but.
Right.
Make a motion? That's what I was waiting for.
Yeah.
What's the motion?
What's the timeframe?
Uh, well, I guess that's, that's the other question. I mean, like, do you want to start like phasing out and transitioning over and like, what's your ideal?
Yeah, but there's no contract because we don't have a contract on the current one.
Exactly. So I mean, like, we can have present legal counsel finish up what they're working on and then any new matters would just be forwarded over to.
Yeah.
The new firm.
Yeah. So do we need, do we need a motion to do that? How do we?
Well, I would, I would like a motion to award because I, I think that's clean. As we put it out for an RFP and I think that.
I'll make a motion to award, uh, what is it? Drummond Wood.
Drummond Woodson.
As our legal counsel or whatever. I don't know if that's.
It's not a contract, so.
Right. It's not a contract, so.
To take the services.
Would they be representing us on the February 1st?
That's the next question.
Before we just, just to.
I mean, as of right now, every, I would say no because attorney Susan Lowery is already reviewing everything that's currently put together in the warrant. So that would be a matter that she would be closing out then.
So maybe this would take effect like on March 1st or something.
Or whatever, anything new.
Anything new that pops out, the new firm would take over and anything we've got right now in existence.
So it won't be in between?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a contract, so.
No.
So it's easy.
Upton and Hatfield.
I second the motion.
Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go with the Drummond.
Thank you. Um, there was discussion about changing or putting forward a warrant article this year to change the organizational structure of the fire department. And that was namely because the warrant article in 1995 referred to an elected, then appointed fire chief position. Um, the bylaws have been amended for the NFRD to, they, they pretty much got rid of that annual election. And the fire chief remains in an appointed position indefinitely, kind of, which follows the, the warrant article. But now you're not going through and doing an annual appointment, appointment, reappointment as you have done in the past. So there was question about, um, you know, putting maybe somebody part-time on a higher salary basis into that position and how that would change. So I've, I've run it by the attorney. She gave us a couple of sample, um, warrant articles proposed. But I don't necessarily think that's in line with what you're looking to do. Um, so I just wanted to have the open discussion since we are getting close. I mean, we're having a budget, a budget hearing. We're going to be posting the town warrant here very soon. Well before your next meeting, so I'd like to.
So looking at what she proposed, reading 150, RSA 154 dash one. Fire department shall be organized according to one of the following forms chosen by vote, which we would possibly be changing. So a fire chief appointed by a local governing body with firefighters appointed by the fire chief. That's currently what we have.
Correct.
A fire chief appointed by the local governing body, if any, with firefighters appointed by the local governing body upon recommendation of the fire chief. Possibly a change. A fire chief elected by the local legislative body pursuant to the RSA with firefighters appointed by the chief. And, um.
And it gets into the fire wards and.
Yeah. Yeah. So we already have a fire chief appoint, like, I don't understand what the change would be now. If we want to do, if we want to entice the person to be there more with more money, we are still within the RSA of appointment. And it just has to meet the qualifications set forth by the bylaws if like, uh, Chief Curry wanted to step down or if they wanted, if somebody else came forward that wanted to do it.
Then it goes.
I don't know what we would actually change. That was my question. It's like, we're changing from appointment to appointment, but we're already at appointment.
Right. I was super, I, granted, I didn't get to delve into all that, but I was super confused by what I actually did read.
I, I think the bylaws change effectuated what we were intending to do through a warrant article without actually, changing the organizational structure because it doesn't need to be changed.
Correct. I mean.
Because even for the compensation section of the chief, there's no, it doesn't say you have to define how the fire chief is compensated. It's to the discretion of the governing body.
Right. So now it comes down to what does a person want to do for how much money? So if it's like, this is too much work, you're not paying enough money, they can come to us and say, oh, we agree. Here's some more money. Would you like more work? And we can work that out based on the line adjustments or if, if we defined it more of a, a statute for, like a, not a statute, but if we define more of like what we expected.
The job description?
That's.
I meant let's just have a body, not a governing body.
So I don't understand what we'd actually be changing from what we have right now. But if, if we think we need to change or if there's a request, I, you know, a line item change or increasing the stipend.
Well, I guess that's where I'm confused because it seems like six months ago, we were talking about, we needed to change it and they had to wait a year.
Right.
I guess I, but you're just saying because the bylaws changed, that's why we don't need to do it.
Right.
Okay.
I think just reading it clear and understanding like what we have and then, the way the bylaws had the elected appointed, I don't even know if that even fit into the RSA that kind of skirted the RSA as it was. Because it's, we were allowing them to kind of bring a person to the Board of Selectmen to be appointed.
Right.
But it was still an appointment by the board.
Correct.
We're basically using their input.
Right.
Well, and that's still, it's a very similar process for if we were to put somebody new in the position. They bring forward the candidate to you for hiring.
So that's.
But it's just not a matter of an annual election followed up by a formal appointment.
Why is it them bringing forward a can, I mean, I thought that's what we were actually trying to change is them not bringing forward the candidate and we hiring somebody.
You, you could get through doing that. You could, you could appoint somebody different. You could go through that. But we have a person there. You can, in the bylaws, stipulate qualifications that are required to be in that position for anybody new. And then we can change, but somebody's not going to step forward at $11,000. So we can change this stipend amount if we wanted to shuffle it all up.
But we don't want to call it a stipend anymore, do we?
We don't, I don't think we want to call it a stipend.
That, that's a.
I think we want to.
It's a behind the curtain type of thing, right? That's, that, that doesn't change any of that if you want to.
How they're compensated doesn't.
Right.
Correct. That if you want to call it a salary, call it a salary.
I think we need to call it a salary.
And I think the hiring process should be a committee.
Right.
Of, either all of this board or some of this board, some of the firefighters, a concerned citizen in town.
It is stipulated now in the.
Should be a wide broad.
It even says in the new bylaws, like, would, they, they would go to the fire department, but it has with, like, there, there is a process.
Okay.
We would.
It comes to the select board after they've.
But it even, I think, says in there that they would, I don't have it written.
You should be involved in that interview process.
Yes.
It's in there.
Okay.
It's kind of vague enough that allows for all of that, too.
So does anything need to go on the warrant article for this then?
No.
I don't believe so. And I was hoping to be able to talk to Susan today before we got to this meeting, but she was tied up in meetings until 7:00 PM. So, um, that couldn't happen. So I just wanted to be able to follow up with her that if, if we are intending to move forward with a warrant article or whether we need to.
Right. All right. If we don't need to go forward with a warrant article, can we just table this till the next time so I can have a chance to actually review this stuff better?
Yep. And I'll forward the, um, the bylaws. I haven't pulled up right here. Okay.
And if it does require a warrant article, then we'd have to have a special meeting to approve it.
Right. Between now and.
Right.
Okay. Um, so speaking of warrant articles, um, everything getting done for year end to encumber funds before the close of the calendar year, um, getting pushed through. The, the purchase of the greater, um, I looked back through the, and found the warrant article where we established the Highway Truck and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund back in 1984. Um, the Board of Selectmen was not named agents to expend on that. So it would require the vote of a, of the legislative body to make that purchase. So what I'm going to recommend to you is that the motion to carry, or actually, your motion was to commit the various funds to make the greater purchase. But move that into a warrant article, it will still go on as a zero impact because it would be, um, using the capital reserve funds and then unreserved fund balance for the, the balance. But, um, just for clarity and for legality, then I think that's the way that we need to move forward with that purchase.
Any capital reserve funds that the Board of Selectmen has?
I have to go through each of them now. The, some of the ones that were established more recently, like within the past decade, they have been. So I guess that's another question, too, is if you want to look at that and other ones and see if we should be named, or you, the Board of Selectmen should be named as agents to expend on them.
I think just knowing that they're.
Okay.
Knowing's important.
Yeah, so we don't.
And then we can make adjustments if we think we need to.
Right.
So, but I guess I would go back to like, either intent or past practice. Has, has it just been assumed and the board has spent from the fund before or is it always been?
No, they, I mean, most of the purchases that have been made out of that, like the last one was the, I think it was the six wheeler, the ten wheeled dump truck. So that was a warrant article two or three years ago.
Okay. Cause it, it is pretty vague. It just says to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum for a highway truck capital reserve fund. Is it, I'm just asking if for like state, when you create these, do you usually have to say when you do that then?
Further to name the Board of Selectmen or whomever as agents to expend.
Cause I feel like this.
Not named, then the default is that it has to go on a warrant.
And it has, yeah, it has to be approved by legislative body.
This was back during town meeting when everything's kind of like quickly written on a piece of paper. If something like that would, would have, cause it even says here that they change it to read nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents in order to avoid a paper ballot. Voted in the affirmative, so obviously like it was one of those, when they did like the, the water thing a few years ago and they're like, oh, quick, and they're changing it on. Our other capital reserve funds generally set up where the Board of Selectmen are though. So they have just missed that in that point back then.
And a lot of amendments have been made in subsequent years where, you know, they've gone back to, um, add them after the fact, but this one does not appear.
Okay. That's, I'm just more learning how when they get generated.
That'll be helpful.
Yep. I, so I do have a list. I was able to find one, I think, um, Dawn Workla, when she used to work in the Selectmen's office, had started a historical review of all the warrant articles that had passed and roads acceptance. It just hasn't been updated since two thousand eighteen, so, um, we just have to add all the warrant articles that have passed since then. But, so there is, there is some pretty neat history here that I was able to put my fingers on, so.
So for the fire truck one?
Yes.
That, again, that goes to town warrant, uh, town warrant article, generally speaking, correct?
At this point, I'm going to assume they all are except for rec revolving and, um, the public, the police department's tech fund we can expend from.
Is there a library one or the conservative, like, is that different conservation commission or those different?
Capital reserve.
Okay.
I think it's just highway and.
Just learning.
Yeah, it doesn't look, the fire, the fire truck one was established in nineteen eighty-nine and I don't see any amendments. Yes, actually, um, two thousand four, appoint Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from the fire, oh, that was a building, never mind. That was the building capital reserve fund, not the equipment. But yeah, I'll get this, um, cleaned up a little bit and send it over to you.
Awesome.
So do we need to, is that something we want to pursue as a potential non-cost warrant article for any of the other ones?
Absolutely.
Just worded the same way we had agreed upon.
And, and then just to follow up on that, in, in regard to our current grader, we actually just got the invoice and I don't know if it's been picked back up from Windmill or not, but, um, Steve was estimating the cost to repair it. It was a solenoid that was bad that had to be sent out and, um, there were some other issues with it. So I, I think he was estimating between ten and twelve thousand dollars. So they did that repair, plus they had to do the heater block. I believe, I think the invoice was in this week's invoice, so I'm trying to go off my memory from Friday. But it was eighteen thousand dollars to repair. We are hoping that it is going to get us through for a while, but again, this just goes to, to show that like, with every repair, they're getting more expensive. It's, it's consumed its useful life and we don't know what the, the next repair bill is going to be.
So it's repaired right now?
It is repaired.
And, but do we have the rental still?
I don't know if they've swapped them back out yet or not, but obviously we're not using it right now.
No, I know, so if we're not using the rental.
We don't get charged for it. We only get charged for the hours it's actually in use. So there we are.
So do we need to change that right now?
No, what I'll do is I will draft up the, the language and send it to the town attorney for review with the rest of the warrant articles, all six of them, or seven, including the operating.
Do you have the one for the, um, that grant loan thing?
Uh, yes, I do have that one, yep. So that will be, yeah, that's seven. Um, and then we have, we've received two petition warrant articles so far. The, um, the deadline for petition warrant articles is end of business day on Tuesday, January fourteenth, so next Tuesday. So we might still see, um, a few of those coming in. The ones that we've received so far is to amend the tax cap, um, from four to six percent in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. And the second one is a second attempt to accept Maple Bridge as a town classified maintained road.
Um, and then so at our meeting on the twenty-seventh is when we will vote on the warrant articles and.
Correct.
On our meet, next meeting, which is January twenty-seventh, we will vote as a Board of Selectmen whether or not we approve all of the warrant articles, including the operating budget.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-seventh, two-seven. No, because the January twentieth is Civil Rights Day, so we moved that meeting to the twenty-seventh.
Moving on to correspondence, um, just to go through what was received through the Board of Selectmen Public Comment General email. We received an email on December twentieth from Allison Friend Gray and it was regarding the Freeman Hall road conditions. That was that really icy storm that we had. The temps were good until about seven o'clock and then they dropped significantly and there was a lot of black ice during a prime commute period. So, um, that was forwarded to the highway director. I provided a response on that. I don't think there's anything further needed. Jean Reed emailed on December thirtieth regarding unlawful Board of Select, uh, Board of Selectmen actions. And that was regarding the greater purchase and the UTV purchase for the police department. I'm, I'm going to assume that we resolved the greater purchase and hopefully we get successful su- support from that, um, on the ballot this year. The UTV purchase, um, is technically auth- authorized under RSA thirty-two colon ten. And I've attached that RSA for you to reference, it's transfer of appropriations. So I don't know, I have not responded to him because the correspondence was directed to you as a Board of Selectmen, so if you would like me to respond, I, I can however you wish.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I would say.
Point to the appropriate law that shows that we have the authority to transfer.
Okay.
Yeah, just to be clear, we actually, I think, talked about this on the meeting that you were at, not the twenty-third, well, before that, is that if there's an appropriation, um, a zero line item in the budget, for instance, there's an airports line item. And if we decided we wanted to build an airport with three hundred thousand dollars, we can't do that.
Correct.
However, if we have line items like for highway department that has allocations toward it, we can go over budget on that line item if we have other line items that are under budget.
As long as we don't go over the bottom line.
As long as we don't go over the bottom line. We just, we can't, if there's a zero, we can't spend, but I guess I just want to.
Just one dollar.
If there's one dollar, we can't. And I just, I, I think there's confusion amongst, about the budget and how that works.
Right, it's not the line items in this budget.
Correct.
These, it's the function, the, the major functions which are the MS, whatever MS number that is.
And thirty-seven.
I, I will say that, I mean, we didn't address the fact that we do have a BOS policy on, you know, ten thousand.
On the purchasing policy.
Right.
Correct.
So we didn't address that. I mean, it was researched on, on the ATB. I felt that Corporal Alvarez did his homework on that, but, um, and then it was researched on for the grader as well, but we didn't.
And, and I would like to just note for the record, since we're talking about it, the grader has been part of the CIP. I think, um, Sean McLean, the prior Public Works Director, had proposed it as a CIP, on the CIP in twenty twenty-three, at which time he had done the research between the multiple vendors that could, um, provide a grader. And, um, at the time, I think Komatsu ended up being the least expensive option, which is that the figure that got put forward on the CIP plan. And, um, Steve Rollins has gone through and updated all of those quotes as well, so I don't necessarily know that it would be something that you would put out for a sealed bid where you're looking for a very specific piece of equipment, whereas you could just go to the various vendors and, and quote it out that way. So I, I guess, you know, it has been before the CIP committee, all of that information has already been provided and.
Do we do sealed bids for the cruisers every year?
We don't because we use state bid pricing.
Right.
When we get the plow trucks, they come to us and say they want a Mack truck with a stainless steel bed and this, 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 they've gone through it.
And there's two vendors that can supply Mack in New England, so it ends up being a competition between the two and it's the same MSRP.
Yeah.
Or the, same with the fire truck, you know, we're going to go with an E-one model.
But we do have the ability to override that.
You do, we just didn't do it.
We just didn't address, I guess I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, so I will respond to Mr. Reed on that. Cheryl Smith on December twenty-ninth emailed, um, the Conservation Commission is looking to host a public hearing in conjunction with your next meeting on the twenty-seventh. I've penciled it in for seven PM and that's for expenditures from conservation funds for the easement acquisition on Stevens Hill Road that they came in and presented on in the beginning, mid-part of December.
Do they have any more information for that?
Yeah, I thought they were going to give us more info on that.
Because it wasn't a good sell at their meeting. Arizona, they said that they wanted to.
I know what it was, yeah.
The unbuildable land, they want to continue to make an unbuildable.
Right, it was protecting because it's protecting the pond that's back there and the habitat that's on there and the endangered species that potentially can be in that habitat.
It just sounded like in their presentation, and I think we got some clarification, but they were trying to protect the wetland portion, which is the unbuildable, so like the conservation one is conserving equal good and bad land so that.
Right, they need to come with a lot more information to share.
Exactly what they wanted to conserve.
Well, again, it's an easement, it's not the conservation of the wetland, it's the easement to get to that so that they can do what they need to do. But I think if we can go back to those minutes and maybe ask, I, cause I know you had some specific questions, but I mean, the public hearing is the opportunity to, to ask some questions. But I know they were presenting very preliminary information.
In a valid.
They've just heard, I think, that week.
Right.
Yes, the easement is to provide access for monitoring the critical wetland and associated hundred-foot buffer. So do you have, other than more information, do you have anything specific that you want me to have them prepare for, for that public hearing?
I mean, the map of specifically, they didn't have a specific what they were trying to do. And it sounded like for the easement or whatever, that the land that they were trying to purchase to conserve was technically that hundred-foot buffer that can't be built on around wetlands anyway.
Right, it was very confusing.
We were protecting something that physically can't be built on.
It would, that's not a hundred percent true.
Right, right, well.
That's what it was confusing.
If that land, even though if it's wetlands or whatever around, you could still do X amount of, you know, cutting trees, you could do, I mean, there's things a homeowner could do on that land. It doesn't mean they can't build a house on there or per septic, but this protects them so nobody can do anything on it.
I think that, I just remember there being a little contention there, just, and I'm just asking for a map before we.
Oh, yeah, exactly. That land would be nice and stuff. A public hearing.
Right.
Show us a map.
There would be a public hearing?
Yes. Okay, so I will request additional information in preparation of a map for that public hearing. Other, under mail and correspondence that have been received, Stephen Benati on January fourth emailed. It was relayed to me via Heidi Carlson because, uh, the contact information for here was wrong. There is going to be an educational meeting in reference to Exeter ALS. That meeting is going to take place on January sixteenth at six PM. And I would like to invite any of you to attend that would be willing and able to. That's the same night as the school budget hearing, so I know Tim will not be available.
That's Thursday?
Yep.
I won't be around.
I'll, I'll take a look to try to, I mean, the big picture is Exeter ALS is phasing out and there was a, like a one point four million dollar, I don't know if it's quite a grant or whatever, that's going to go to, um.
Plasnow.
Plasnow, and they're going to operate two ALS facilities, one out of Plasnow and one out of Brentwood, I believe. I don't know the exact location, high level, um, but I don't remember when that, that was supposed to take effect at the end of March, I believe.
Correct, yeah, because, um, Exeter ALS is transitioning out. That was the second piece of correspondence that you have.
Which part?
Sixteenth.
March sixteenth of twenty-five is when Exeter ALS will be terminating there.
And the meeting is January sixteenth.
Yeah, I don't think it's March sixteenth.
It's March?
It's March, but it's, I don't think it's the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, March fifteenth. There's a copy of it in the correspondence folder there from Beth Israel.
Over there. I was like, what? Obviously, it's been making a lot of news.
March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-first.
That they'll stop.
Yep.
So.
The meeting's in January sixteenth.
Correct.
Where?
Exeter.
Seco School of Technology.
I'm going to call on every room.
So you think you can attend?
I, I will try, I'll take a look at my.
I'll try to get over there, too.
High level, I know kind of what's going on, but.
You're more than welcome to attend the school budget hearing and I'll go instead if you'd like, so just let, just let me know.
It's a generous offer.
I'm a giving man.
New Hampshire DOT Jason Trembley is our contact for the New Hampshire four oh six one two project, which is the New Hampshire one fifty-two over North Rid, North River Bridge Replacement Project. Due to some additional land acquisitions that they had to, um, take care of, the change, there was a change in their advertising date, so there's correspondence in there. Um, I think there is a meeting coming up January twenty-eighth, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Thank you.
This is the ad date.
The ad date is January twenty-eighth, correct?
I don't see where the meeting is.
Basically, they're saying in the letter right here, it's just that the fact that the time allowed for the summer of two thousand twenty-five because of the new acquisition of land and to getting this to go through the governor and council approvals, it might not happen. And they want to make sure they do it in the summer because of school, so they're potentially telling us right now that bridge might not be replaced till two thousand twenty-six.
But they will evaluate it every quarter.
They will evaluate every six months. So they're just telling us it could be a delay.
Project delays.
But it, but it won't be done during the school year.
Right, well, that's, that's a huge plus.
Yeah.
Because of the traffic and the schools and stuff like this.
That would be really.
When I first saw it, I was thinking it's going to be in September.
So.
And lastly, we already talked about Beth Israel Leahy Health, Exeter Hospital, sent an email on December twenty-third, just letting us know that their, um, services would be expiring in March twenty-first of twenty-five. That is all I have for my report tonight. Thank you for listening.
That was enough.
Well, we should break past Alan's meeting.
Well, that's why I pushed him back.
Uh, we're going to move to our appointment. Alan, you mind coming up? Our facilities manager update?
Good evening.
How you doing, Stephen A. Allen?
Good, good. Happy New Year.
Good, good, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Alan Trant, facility director, Nottingham, New Hampshire.
Smile.
Smile.
Hello.
Where would you like to begin?
Let me look at, this is just.
Could we maybe start with, I guess, if you want to go through the blue highlights, the things in your report that have been completed, kind of an update as to, speak over me if you'd like.
No, go right ahead, man.
And then kind of an update is where we are with the project, the new meeting room and the rec office here, and then kind of go through those yellow highlighted items, the priorities for the coming year.
I don't have a highlighted copy of my own.
I have one extra. I printed, I printed mine and I didn't realize Alan was printing them too, so I had my original.
Thank you. All right, completed items. Gym floor has been completed, November 12th. The gutter installation on the ball field side of the community center was installed as well. Any questions on the, on those two items?
No, the floor looks good. I haven't looked at the gutters yet, but.
Is that the extent of the gutter, we were just looking at this side here, prevent the washout?
Well, to, in preparation for the walkway being paved in that site work.
DPW said that they'll do the underground four-inch pipe for the downspouts, so we get all the water underground, under the new walkway.
Okay.
That'll be springtime before they pave.
Right, terminating probably on the bank up there.
Correct, yeah, probably halfway down the hill.
Yep.
That should take care of some of the heaving issues and any, any backup that we've had with the slab here.
Another projects that were done this year was the outside steps on the dame school for the historical society. You also redid the, the access to the dumpster.
What do you want to call it, the dump?
The trash and the.
Trash.
I don't deserve.
The trash compactor.
Compactor, okay. Just wanted to make sure I got proper terms here, not to offend anybody, but dump.
Active cycling centers, like you say, it looks like. Is it technically a trash compactor?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, that's the term.
Well, it just wasn't highlighted as blue things done, so that's why I just.
Yep.
Because it's been done since before the report.
In the back of the building. These are things specifically in this report, but.
Right, yeah, that was, that was some time ago, so I just highlighted things that were kind of in between the ask of the highlighting, of the highlighting and today, the last quarter, I suppose.
And then where are we at with renovation of the back, not the backpack room, the new conference room and the, I mean, the recreation department moving in here?
We are ready for drywall, we passed our insulation inspection, electrical's all been pulled forward with the new walls for the mini split to be hung on that temporary. There's a cinder block wall between the food pantry, so we, we built that out with two-by-fours, so that gives Clarence enough depth for his line set to be in the mini split. But we're, we're ready for drywall, electrical's done. We passed our insulation inspection on Monday last week, I think it was.
Now, how come they didn't insulate over some of those, it looks like almost fire blocks going up the wall?
On which wall?
The one you insulated, or the foam insulation.
The exterior wall or the?
Exterior, yeah.
The police department side?
Yep, and that conference room, you spray foamed it off, but then on some of the fire stops and even the Joyce header, they didn't have any insulation over them. It's like they didn't foam that part of it, which I thought was weird.
I'll have to take a look.
It seemed weird.
I'll take a look.
But they all signed off on it, so.
Yeah, I'll pop in before I leave, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Because I think when we had last met, the timeline was gonna be, this room was gonna be done actually by now?
Yes.
So where are we at now?
It's, I, I guess it's just a little, a little slower than we all would have liked, but it's, we're ready, the drywall is also the paint, the primer, so once the drywall's done, we can paint the walls, then get the carpet squares in and swap out for new ceiling tiles, because they're, they're a little aged out back. That's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. Have you shared the carpet square price?
I haven't, no.
The flooring came in at $6,500.
And it's Reimer who did the gym floor.
Wilder.
Wilder, yes, Wilder.
There was some conversation in the past meeting about that. So there was a $7,000 line item that came in at 65. The carpet squares, so that 500 in savings will pretty much cover the ceiling tile line item, so.
Yeah, but I think that's one of the questions, is the cost of those carpet squares, like how much square footage is back there and how much of those tiles piece, it seemed, it seemed expensive when we were looking at the total cost of those tiles.
I reached out to the library, they had a renovation recently, and that was, I don't have that number written down, but that was, that was pretty much in line with what we had, I think it was 18 a square yard and change. I'll get those figures, I can email them over, it's not in this report, but as far as a reference for.
Okay.
But I, I spoke with Reimer before we put that line item down, it's, it's more that grinding the concrete and doing the prep, the concrete's painted, so we're gonna have to work on the floor, it's not just, like, the library's just plywood subfloor, you can do a little bit of light sanding and put carpet squares down on that, but we're pretty much gonna have to encapsulate the concrete and, same as the gym floor, it'll be the same process. Labor intensive as opposed to reconstruction or your, if you're renovating a basement, you get carpet squares put in, there's not that much prep to a slab compared to what we're working with.
Yeah, it's $1,500 in prep work alone, and then it's 3,765 for the carpet squares, and we did order some surplus just so we can replace in the future and have it match, and then it was $1,200 for the install.
Okay.
And timeframe? Did they give us the timeframe?
They're, they're waiting for us, I mean, we need to get the, the drywall and the painting done before we put new flooring down.
Right.
So I think they were going to, when I went over to look at the samples before Christmas, I think it was like two weeks before Christmas, they had a couple of bigger projects, I think they were doing something over at the school in February, so they were gonna try to squeeze us in before then if timing aligned.
You're gonna seam before you paint, like the sheetrock, get it muddied, get it sanded, and then grind concrete and make all that heavy dust, and then clean it up and then paint and put in floor tiles. Let me just make sure we're getting, before we paint, nice walls on there and then grind concrete. Are we grinding it or we just?
It says grinding leveling of cutout and concrete electrical work, priming over painted concrete, filling in minor holes as needed.
I'll see if he uses a water when he's sanding. I know when, when he was sanding the gym, it was a, it was a pretty heavy dust, he didn't have any issue with that.
Okay.
But it was VCT with that, with that one spot of concrete.
Okay.
Drop, but I'll, I'll see if he's gonna use water with that or not.
Just before we, I don't know if it's gonna be the same company that does sheetrock that's gonna paint, or if it's gonna be the other painting contractor we have.
Certapro, same painter.
Okay.
They're, the drywaller will be a different company, they'll sand it, prime it, get it ready for paint. But I'm sure if we had to throw some sheet stock or something of plastic and.
Yeah, I don't want to delay.
We have to tape the walls off for him to sand the floor, that's.
So if you could get a ballpark calendar estimate as far as when that room will be habitable, so that then this can be started on for the rec, what do you think that would be?
It'd be February at this point.
Will the rec be in this room by the start of the summer?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, this, this room is just.
You just said that on, so the rec will be here, and this room will be ready for them for the summer.
This is just aesthetics here, we just need cubicles and a door.
Just throwing it out there, we have somebody here from the rec, so I just thought we'd just, not pointing her out, but just, I know she's anxious, so just.
Is that June 18th?
Whatever day you, whatever day you want to put it.
College summer break, May 7th.
I don't know, I think they're gonna be in school until July at this point, so.
We don't need to go about that part, so leave that for another subject.
I'm just sure that they would like to plan to make sure that they know for their summer.
And then when's the, I know we talked about the.
The AV company, I'm just waiting to, I have to connect, the gentleman that I've been dealing with from Events United is on a large install right now, I was just trying to connect with him to see if we can get that coordinated, and he just said he's gonna be tied up, so I've been referred to somebody else within the office to get that hopefully scheduled. I didn't want to push them, I, I didn't want to give them false hope that the building would, that the room would be ready until I knew for sure, so.
And furniture and all that stuff's on order?
No. Nope. I mean, we're, we're not going with anything that's going to be customized or whatever, so it's gonna be a matter of, you know, whether we order it through Uline or another distributor, it's just gonna be a matter of what works.
So what's on the game plan for this year?
It's up to the town voters, I think. Everything on the one to three year in my report, I'd like to see done as soon as the weather permits for things that are exterior, but I, it says one to three years, but I really feel like that should be something that's addressed as, as soon as we can.
And the items you highlighted are?
Things that I will, I will take care of as part of my position for the town is, is yellow. There was a question on that a few, a few, a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago. If the highway department has a pressure washer that works, I'm sure they have a pressure washer that, that would do that job just fine.
Just mountain one, so, better have.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be a large heated one.
I talked to Matt Curry from the fire department, and we talked about the flooring in there, months ago, we talked about that flooring, and he said just a, just a buff and recoat would be fine for that VCT.
So we could probably even have the company that did ours here.
Right.
Go quote it out, or unless you had another person could do that.
Strip and wax, right, yeah, three, three to four coats was this, this bid for this community center?
Mm-hmm.
So that, that would be fine for, I came across in the capital improvement program from 2023, calendar year 2023. It was tabled for, we walked it back in March, a couple flooring companies and I, and they all pretty much agreed that it, it doesn't have to be replaced, it just has to, maybe one or two tiles, but nothing, nothing to the extent of $20,000.
Fire department's missing out on this, is there anything else in there?
As, as, as far as maintenance, they do a lot of their own, and the plumbing, Clarence, his, his contract covers anything, heating, plumbing naturally, but for their exterior, for the report, it would just be the gutter seams, so we're getting a quote for the gutters to be resealed, because they're not seamless gutters.
Okay.
They've had some ice buildup over the years, so just pop the seam loose, so we'll just spot repair the gutters.
Sure.
And I'm getting more information on a second washer and dryer.
Actually, Alex Campbell was able to get one donated from Lowe's.
Okay.
It was a, like a, I think a stackable unit washer and dryer, so now it's just a matter of, I think I, I don't know if there's plumbing to the, the second floor, would they want to have it installed, or if they have to do any vetting or whatever, I'm not sure what the status of that is, I just know that they got the unit donated, so.
Okay. So that would be before, is that before, I think Clarence mentioned before, after the, the inline for water, if they need that to be before or after the filter?
Okay, I'm not sure.
That's, that's just kind of where we left off with that, but.
Probably the water filter just for the heating system, maintain that, I would think.
With just the way that the water line is, I, that's just all I heard about it, but as far as what's, like, what's been brewing the last month?
So from your list here, it looks like there's roughly about $150,000 over the next three, one to three years of expenditures that you feel necessary. Not including the stuff from three to seven, so just the next one to three years.
Great.
I mean, I would think, just quickly looking at the Department of Public Works, like the, the old shed or removing the shed, I mean, I think you could get a, a shipping container for $5,000 as opposed to a $15,000 wood structure that you could have painted and look appropriate, they're weather tight, 30 feet long or something like that, so that could.
I, I think.
If the, if it's a need.
I don't think Steve wanted to replace the shed, I think he was talking about maybe putting like a lean-to off the side of the existing building, like, there was other options to replace that storage function.
It's not necessarily what doesn't need to be weather tight.
Right.
I mean, that's just a point of discussion when we get there.
We, we spoke about putting that lean-to addition off the side, and then the, the break room shipping container was kind of the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Steve's still pushing for that, something he can back a truck in, from the backside of the building, he can back a truck up to that lean-to and, and unload things straight. And the depth of the shipping container wouldn't really, you'd have to do it from the long way if you're gonna do any like sheets of plywood or things like that, but that you're really, a shipping container, you only really have about four and a half feet.
Yeah, if he's looking for something else like a lean-to, that's completely different. If we're talking about just storing materials, then that's where I was going at, but it sounds like, it sounds like it's different than even a shed.
He was just speaking of a, a deeper storage.
Okay.
That it, even with the shed, he said it would be better to put the money into being a lean-to. That it, uh, even with the shed, he said it would be better to put the money into being a lean-to. Extending the concrete pad and having that.
Okay.
Uh, something they could access from inside and also from the back with a roll-up door. Which was after this, this was written.
Okay. I guess it'd be better to find, you know. What's he gonna park in there? The excavators going in there? Is this, you know?
What's the use of?
What's the use of it? Like a storage container is good, but. I don't think the highway department needs to be storing, you know, it's not lumber related or anything for what.
Stern tires and emergency signs and that stuff.
Is it ten?
Funvex boxes.
Ten feet for the road barriers? Are they eight footers? Or I have never looked at them really that close. Are they? I mean, a road is fifteen feet wide.
Right.
A road closure barricade.
Oh, they all come apart? Yeah.
Right, yeah, the.
I mean, I think they're just meant to block one lane, so it's probably around six to eight feet, I would think.
Thinking like eight.
Half the time they just throw an orange cone on the road and say, go around.
There's a lot of things sticking out of the shed now, so that was, i- if we made it a. A monoslope shed on a pad, he could back up to it, the storage unit style roll-up doors. But he said if we're gonna put the money into that property, then it should be attached to the building, so they have a door to access it from the inside as well. We can talk more about it with him. If, if it's in the budget to do it, then it'll become a serious plan, not a proposed plan. Right now, that shed is falling over. It's not even really a shed, so.
Oh, yeah. That's the shed that's sitting next to the river.
Correct.
Backside of the property over there.
Right.
Behind the shed.
Yeah.
Or behind that garage.
Kinda wonder if there's anything else living in there besides just the, uh.
Probably.
Well, there's no doors, so.
That's what I mean.
It's, it, it's time to be replaced and he, he just has to keep those things out of the weather, so.
Out of all these projects on here, is there something you categorize when we talk about public works? We talk about. Recycling center, the old firehouse should just be burnt down, but that's a whole story. The Grange, you know, where's the priority list? And every building has one, I think up to one to three years. But if you had, if you so had, say, you got sixty thousand dollars. Do you have a plan of action that you think would be the best way to spend that fifty on certain buildings?
The SAU siding on, on the, I'll call it the north side, but the side facing us here, I'm pretty sure it's the north side. That siding's pretty rotted. And paint, paint at the transfer station, recycling center. That building is, if we don't address that, we're gonna lose. The sheathing is just gonna rot if we don't fix it, and so.
So that needs to be painted.
I, I, I think paint would be a big one for. We could get a lot done for just a painting budget for these different buildings and a couple pieces of trim here and there to be replaced while we're painting, but.
So if I remember correctly, one of the tenants up there would say that because of all the cracks going down. With the ship lapping or whatever, that there was a lot of, uh, flying stinging insects that would sometimes be in there. So if we were to do that, you might wanna do that early before either they. Come back and take up residence again or whatever, but just as a, a point of like, let's not try to do it in August when they're heavily active. Flying around the cans. If we got it done in April or before they get here, it might be better to, to just prioritize that early, at least. Cocking it and sealing it before we get to the painting, but. Think our use of SAU, there was a lot of stinging insects that would kinda hide in there and then fly over to the cans where there's tons of. Sweet things and stuff, and then they fly back and they make a nest in the building, so.
That's a pretty open structure to begin with, I think. It's probably a lot of nests in there, yeah.
Right.
So we, uh, put another cost in there for possible extermination?
No.
It's almost like a.
Does it ask a?
Well, they're kinda, they're going right there.
We have pest control up there. I can see if they do with flying insects, just treat it accordingly. I mean, it's, it's difficult because there is a lot of attractant there.
Right, there's a lot of area.
And they, they fly away too, though. I mean, they migrate.
Well, it's a heavily, it's a heavily visited.
Last year was awful.
Place. So. Live in New Hampshire. Do you?
Well, solve our problems differently with that, but. I think the floor on the backside of the garage too of the recycling center, there was a large hole or a crack there that a lot of water would get in. I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed with Steve in terms of.
That's all set now. He, um, jackhammered the ledge that was coming up and causing that water to flow in, so he jackhammered that the spring. And then just regraded it.
There you go. Fix that wrong.
Good.
Mark that as complete on this list. And what do we got left for the way, way, way back? The upside down? Looks a lot better back there, but like where now it's a lot of hanging wires, a lot of. Loose.
The electrician's been cutting things back and deleting what we're not gonna need.
Okay.
For the bag. I think we're at the point of, uh, the dumpster is hauled out because that's where the snow gets pushed for the police department. So if it would be, uh, if we haul out the insulation, but. We wait a couple, couple weeks, couple months, then it won't be as cold back there. Maybe it won't. If I tear all the insulation out of there now, it might, might make a difference, it might not, but. As far as getting rid of the mold and spraying things out, it would be. If, if it wants to be done next week or if it could be two months, it really wouldn't. If we delete all the wires first, then it just kinda sits the way it is. It's a lot, it's a lot drier. It's a lot better in there. We fixed the roof leaks and things like that, so. I think I'm still chasing one leak in the roof back there. Other than that, it's.
Still one leak? I was gonna say, there was a couple leaks.
We deleted a lot of the vents.
Okay.
And there's, I know there's still one active leak, but it's. It's kind of a dead zone anyways, but, uh, without having any of the organic materials in there anymore, I don't think that leak's really the top priority for. We haven't noticed any rodents or anything new.
Yeah, we've been clear.
That's.
Yeah, we've been clear for a couple of months now.
Eight, eight months, I think, out, out back. There's been. I've had no issues out back. Everything, maybe by disturbing all the area, they all took off, but.
They've migrated to the police cruisers.
Cruisers?
I don't even want. No eating in the cars.
It's not in my wheelhouse. I. I think we're ready. What, whatever pace we want it to be, it can be, but it's, it's stripped down to the exterior walls and it's. We haven't had any snow yet, so there could have been another dumpster here for the insulation, but it's, it's really up to. Just having the electrical brought back to the panel and deciding what goes where, what we need to keep. If we don't have any future plans for the space, it's hard to say what to get rid of right now.
That'd be the next step. Identify how we wanna use it. Well, it would all have to be rewired anyway.
Well, some of it.
Depends on what you wanna use it for. You could just blow a garage door in and put all the police cruisers under cover.
I know the electrician's been back there and he's, he's deleted a lot, but it, it, over the years, it's. The supplies go to, to everything. It's, there's really no rhyme or reason. It's just. One break, it goes to this room, one break, it goes to the spire, one break, it goes out back. It's, it's all the same panel, so it's. Wherever they had room, they used it, they utilized the panel.
So pulling out the insulation, pulling the electrical back, what else is left to just kinda seal that project up until we determine what's next for that area?
I'd have to get, nobody would put a price on it so they could see it, so we don't have any quotes for, for actually spraying it and having the mold companies come in.
Do you think you're gonna be able to put in some type of a barrier wall to block? It off so we can have some type of a functional space between like the old foyer? Yeah.
My, my concern would be putting, it would have to be like metal framing, but anything that we put in there is just gonna get mold on it. So it's kinda.
Gotta deal with the mold first.
Make, make a decision on what we wanna do with, if we delete all the electrical. Then we can just wipe it out to studs like it's a steel frame. We have to keep a room for the electrical because it feeds this side of the building. So we, we have to build something, but anything I build back there is gonna get mold on it.
Until.
We, we could always treat it with the mold treatment, but it's really a conversation we haven't really had yet.
Well, the end result of the back building was just to get it cleaned.
Right.
Right.
Clean it, get it down to the studs, get it down there, get the rodents out. Don't, who cares about electrical in there because we're not building anything?
Well, no, but the electrical that's back there feeds the rest of the building.
Right, so that's the only, that's part of, that's where the plan should be for wherever connecting that to this building.
Right.
And if we build a wall, it's afraid for mold.
Right. So my question was, how do we fix that? I have a call in to Clarence for a, a price to delete the restrooms that were back there. And he can just pour concrete, cap everything that's in the floor and. Just delete the bathrooms back there. Septic isn't usable anymore anyways, so. If there ever was something in the future, it'd have to be from scratch anyways. So, and we probably don't want the bathrooms right there. If we do something new, they'd be relocated. As, as far as, we can delete the bathrooms, get the floor sealed off and then. Pull the insulation out. And then have it cleaned out, but it's. Electrical, I guess, is the next step because it's, it, it's in the way of us. Tearing everything out. To like, to get started, it's, it's kind of a non-starter. If, if we have a plan, I can keep some of it. If we don't have a plan, then we could just say scrap it all.
I don't think there would be a plan for years to come.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, so if we're looking to basically do what we intended to do, which would mean we need to have a more permanent structure or enclosure for the electrical then, right?
Right.
That's what you're saying.
Right.
So what would we need to do to get there and how much do you think it would cost?
As far as electrical, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable putting a number on the, like, deleting it, but. There'd be a couple more dumpsters and. A- as far as days, I would say there's probably four days back there to clean everything out to get ready for the company to come in and seal everything off.
There's still like the shells of the air handlers up on the overhead and all that.
That's all electrical, yeah, and I think it's, it's pretty high voltage electrical. I think some are four forty.
Okay.
Up there, so we, we'd have to get. I'm not touching it.
All right. I agree. I did, I, I wasn't sure what was still connected or, or not.
It's technically.
That back room has a large expenditure money needed to even get close to being finished.
If we're gonna drop the heating systems and get down to a steel frame, then.
I mean, the heating systems are no good anymore. They, they don't even have coils on them. They didn't have.
Right.
Never treated. They were just abandoned.
Right.
And everything's, nothing's reusable.
What, what do we leave and say this is a, a dead area and what do we take out and say this is a dead area? That's. You, if you wanted to steal studs, no insulation, no organic material, it's just concrete and steel.
Yeah, weather tight.
Right.
Right, that's it.
Yeah.
So if we start pulling air handlers down, that's gonna probably create leaks and stuff too, right?
I mean, they're, they're just suspended from, uh, I think he said they closed the vents off, so they were drawing air from the outside. They'd heat it to internal ductwork. I don't think.
There's a couple, yeah, a couple like air exchange, right? Yeah, pulls from the outside, but that can be sealed off pretty quickly, that's.
They don't go through like the roof. They're internal onto, like hanging off the I beam when I looked at it before. But if there's still electricity running to it, then we have to just cap that off and then either.
Bring it back.
Leave, leave a bunch of coils saying this is circuit five and just have them sitting there, which is potential to do.
So again, does that another priority project? I mean, we're just gonna keep going on with it, but like, I think we deserve, yeah, we gotta keep moving on with it though.
Cause that had its own separate bucket of money to finish.
But we're almost. How far are we through that?
Through the fifty thousand?
Yeah.
I'd have to get an updated figure for it. There hasn't been that much. I mean, like, we've only had two, three, I think, three dumpster removals. Um, we had. I don't know, maybe like a week's worth of labor for your guys total.
Total, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't, it really hasn't been much. The, the, I think the bulk of it's gonna be at the end when they come in and, and treat. That's gonna be the expensive part.
So I think getting some numbers together for that stuff would be really important, so we can figure out.
Yeah, cause we can see how much we have left.
And then having an order of operations is okay if you need to just, if you wanna seal it up, which is what we wanna do. Right, just have it emptied and is what, what do we need to get there and what other steps?
Yeah, it's probably cleaned out enough now to start getting bids on it, because I, I met with five companies now total. Over eleven months and they, nobody's comfortable putting a number on it. So maybe now they will be. I'll take some videos and pictures and send them out for an RFQ and see what they say now. Dale, Dale mentioned building a corridor for the, the new meeting room exit. But to, to drop that next ceiling is gonna be all the wires that do feed this way, so it's.
You gotta start from the back and move forward?
Kinda, yeah. It was just kinda stuck. I think we'd be, if I drop any more material out, then we're gonna have more wires just hanging without anything, because the suspended ceiling's holding all the wires. There's no, there, there's no umbilical cord. There's, there's no actual chase. It's, it's just loose.
Right, they're just sitting on top of the frame of the ceiling.
Right. I'll get some figures together for, I'll, I'll put that RFQ out and see. The two companies were local, so they should get back pretty quick.
If this project continues into the spring, there might be a possibility for, you know, this board to have a walkthrough with you to get a hands-on, to actually see what. What needs to get done. Might help with your, what you expect for expenditures or where they're willing to go.
How many lights are still up with art taking those housings out?
Quite a few.
Oh, we can go.
I, I mean, we had talked about doing something different out in the hallway here and we think that there was enough to pull from out that. Just to get rid of the, um, the side wall sconces, not sconces, but those older fixtures and putting something in a ceiling mount.
Right.
And so I think he thought there was enough to do the hallway plus that room and then still have extras left over.
Okay. Yeah, we.
So it's just a matter of what he's doing is re, he's recycling the fixtures that are out there and he's gonna put in an LED retrofit into them, so it'll be an upgraded fixture, but then we're not purchasing new.
That's a pretty good workaround for, for our, our options, that's. I guess that's kinda why it's a, a little slower than just throwing everything in the dumpsters. We, like, the bathroom partitions were saved and used for the renovation. With Clarence Beck and I think that was March.
Was the green stuff on here stuff that you were gonna take care of?
Green.
Yeah, it's yellow and what I printed for you.
Whatever color.
Yes, yeah. We're not pointing any fingers as to why this is green.
Or yellow, whatever color you wanna say. Is, is that stuff that you did or is it stuff that you're going to do?
Those are things I feel is in my purview for the contract with the town to do this year, to do this year coming.
Okay.
I guess a couple of months ago now, the last meeting I was here. Question of what, what was in the wheelhouse for me to take care of as the contract's written, and I think that's. These are things I feel is things I can take care of.
Well, because I'm just looking at the department again, I'm just, it's highlighted, so I'm just looking at it. You know, you got department. You know, you got Department of Public Works, you got the building over there, garage and entry doors, install new weather stripping to improve heating efficiency and reduce moisture, uh, intrusion. But we're in the heating season, season now.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I don't have to wait till, till May to, to do that, right?
Well, that's what I've, right, I mean, it's better to be. If it's two months from now, it gets done, it kinda defeats the, a large portion of the heating system, so.
Although we wanted to concentrate on these rooms because we.
Well, again, I'm just throwing out what's on the highlight, I didn't just.
Right.
Just reading what's there.
Just keep our priorities straight. Ceiling tiles, that's an easy. Now, I think we gotta get a lift in.
Uh, step ladder reaches enough.
Okay.
We'll be, yeah, we'll be alright. But then with the, with the old floor. I think the lift was here for some outside lights and Art brought it in last time. For the gym.
He, he brought it in to do the lighting retrofit in there. He did that in twenty twenty-three, and then while he was there, I asked him to replace some of the ceiling tiles where the lift was already here.
I wouldn't. I wouldn't wanna be the guy with the lift on the new floor.
I'd say it would've been nice to get it done before.
Yeah, we have, we have a pretty tall ladder that should reach most of
Yeah, yeah.
the problematic ceiling tiles.
We did the Christmas lights with that ladder.
It gets a, yes, there's really not many things that can be done before.
No.
The weather breaks and really just the, like you had mentioned, sealing up the garage. Anything else, you have to wait until spring. Except the ceiling tiles.
We're gonna try to pull from that back room and then utilize those. Whatever's not warped out, we can bring forward.
Yep.
I'm also waiting to see if the roof repair and all the spot leak repair holds before we put those ceiling tiles up, but it's. I haven't noticed any new water
Good.
in the last two months. That last rain.
But it's only rained twice.
That's why I haven't switched the tiles over yet. I new tiles would let me know if there's a new leak. But I, I, I just don't wanna do it twice.
Did they take care of the one in the hallway? That ventilation fan that was leaking? Yeah.
Yes.
So that's all cleared?
I haven't noticed any water, but it's only rained
Yeah.
twice. But major rain events anyways. I, I was hoping for a snowstorm or two to get to see what, if it would draw the moisture in as the snow melted or not. But I, I think we took care of that. We, we walked the roof a few weeks ago. Found a couple problem areas, but I, I think they're all taken care of.
So under Dan Dane Schoolhouse, the front steps are done, right?
We'll put a.
Where's there an asterisk on that? Cause they need to be finished.
Oil stain.
Okay.
And spring.
Okay, so they're, the steps are done, but they're not, they still need to be
treated.
primered and all that stuff.
No, just, just oil stain.
Alright, oil stain, okay. What about the back rail? Railing for that? Does that need to be?
That's just raw pressure treated lumber there for, for the re, for the railing. It's composite decking for the walkway, but you'd have to put a little heavier treatment on that.
Yellow, it's highlighted yellow. So I wasn't sure. I know that like part of it's done. I was just trying to understand what's done and what's not done.
Right. Yeah, that note that's in yellow for, for the staining, that's back when they were still the green stairs.
Yellow.
As far as what was in my computer, but it'll just be an oil stain now. I'd like to stay away from the solid stains outside if we could.
I agree with that.
Is any objections to the Nottingham green or not, but I solid stain's not very good for New England. As far as priority, John, I would say that the, uh, just keeping the, keeping the weather out. For your question earlier, uh, John Warren, sorry, it would be just, just taking care of anything that's exposed, any, any paint issues. Siding's pretty, pretty much rotted off now with the SAU on the backside, so. We can address that.
What is it? Pine, clad boards out back?
Pretty sure it's pine. I don't think it's cedar. Alright, I think it's old enough to probably pine. It's hard to say why it looks like marlboro, but it's not a very big spot. It's just up the roof line with the metal roof. But is, I think just focusing on paint this year would be and, and the ridge caps are all failing because that early two thousand shingle didn't really hold up too well to the weather. All, all manufacturers have the same problems with their shingles, so. The cap gets it first. Had a guy knock on my door this weekend. Looks like you need new roof cap.
Hey?
Said, really? Just had it replaced last year. I'd be surprised if I need new roof cap.
It's a nice friendly visit.
Yes, he walked away, went to the next house, told them they probably need a new roof cap too. Did you get his business?
I do have his name, yes, so I pass that along.
Companies may not wanna.
Looks like he's willing to do the ridge cap.
Well, I'm not sure if he can identify what needs to be done, that's the problem.
So. Old Town Hall and recycling. Parties.
The SAU building?
SAU building.
Yeah.
Old Town Hall.
Okay.
Old Town Hall and recycling.
Uh, Old Town Hall is the
It's the fire.
The fire escape.
Yeah, let's call it what it is. It's the SAU building.
I'll keep it separate though. Is, is the, is the front half still SAU? It's just the, it's just the back that's SAU, right?
Right.
Yeah, so the SAU siding, rot repair over, over Rhoda, is that her name?
Rhonda.
Rhonda's office, that's, that's where the siding issue is and the fire escape's getting kinda blistered out with that metal fire escape on the, the town hall gable.
Just needs to go to paint probably.
Maybe there's a mobile sandblasting company or a painter that has the unit that could do the
Straw.
sand blasting or walnut shell blasting or whatever the industrial granular blasting. But that would be.
Black magic.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, any used motor oil we could put on there. No, it needs a, it needs, it needs a good, a good workover and a good coat of paint. If we're not using that, we could just remove it. If it's, if it's a, if it's a pointy egress, I don't know, but it never goes upstairs in the attic anymore, but.
The door's padlocked closed.
Right.
So you can't go upstairs unless you have a key. So it's not accessible to the public.
It's not padlocked closed.
Then I guess we could.
It was padlocked, it was padlocked.
They have like a child lock on it, but.
You may.
You, you, you want me to show you how to open it? It's not, upstairs is not supposed to be.
Right, it's not.
Public.
You shouldn't go up there though.
Yeah, right. The door was closed last time I was in there and it was shut to a point where
Yeah.
you weren't accessible.
Inquiring minds wanted to know.
Yeah.
Well, we probably should think about making sure that that's not.
Yep.
Accessible. Yeah, yeah. Definitely should not be accessible.
That, no, that's, I guess I was hoping for better by having.
I opened up a can of worms, didn't I? We'll live it the way it is.
I'm good. Anything else for Alan?
Thank you, Alan. Alright, thank you.
John, on behalf of the nodding and his folks, I want to thank the new staff.
They're gonna look nice when they get stained. They're all pretty for this summer.
We'll have to pick a color. Thank you.
Thanks.
Where we at? Now we go back to the budget review. We have no assessing, right?
No.
No.
Okay. So are the green things highlighted on the one six twenty-five stuffed with the?
That's what the budget committee made for line item reductions.
I see, they see the value of the Board of Selectmen? Beautiful.
I'd love to say that they deliberated upon that for a long time.
Bet that was real quick.
Very. But I'd mention, I recommended it at the meeting before. I said, if you're gonna cut anything, go for that first. They'll have to something.
Was that set by Warren article though?
What's the yellow?
Um. It might just be an ink malfunction. Wait, oh, yellow under your line were, um,
Yeah, I'm not gonna call.
items that, so I was just trying to identify the changes between the two meetings from eleven eighteen to twelve two for the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So.
Like under assessing, like you have it.
Yeah, we added the twenty thousand dollars in for the revaluation balance.
So essentially it ended up being about thirty-eight thousand dollars that was just moved.
Shifted around.
Shifted around, um.
They added five thousand dollars in for building maintenance and then thirty thousand dollars in for, um, shim seal and.
Shim seal coat, yeah.
Yeah, shim seal coat.
And then they also there's a few members of the budget committee that were adamant about not having the assistant rec director's salary coming out of the operating budget or leaving it as, as is, having fifty percent, fifty percent coming from the rec revolving, but, um, we agreed to kind of move halfway there to take seventy-five percent of the salary to come from the operating budget and the remaining twenty-five percent to come from the rec revolving fund. And then hopefully maybe by two thousand twenty, two thousand thirty-nine or two thousand forty, we can get to have the whole salary coming out.
And they also granted a, a three percent increase to the appointed positions of the emergency management director, animal control officer. And then.
Tax collector?
Tax collector. I think that was already calculated in there.
They want, yeah, they just wanted to.
Yeah, it was a tax collector.
The town clerk was already budgeted in there.
Correct.
For the, what was making the EM salary? I mean, they're recommending it going up a hundred and five dollars?
Three percent.
Three percent.
Did they tell you, did they tell the Board of Selectmen to take a pay cut for some of the week? I don't understand. Should've watched that.
We don't protect the town, like the emergency management director.
Of course, for all the emergencies that are happening every day.
They wanted to make sure, because the merit compensation pool does not take into account the appointed positions, they wanted to make sure that those positions didn't get stuck in the same.
Well, you see, the comment last year was if the school board isn't taking a cut in their pay, then why should the selectmen take a cut in their pay?
Oh, that was brought up.
That was brought, yeah.
At the meeting is to.
So if they're not taking a cut on the school board.
You know something? If the school board budget, if the school budget, district budget is coming in at three point two percent and it's, you know, it's reasonable, why do you need to cut it? Just to cut it? I don't know. They work hard too, the school board members do. They actually.
Their meetings are four to five hours longer than ours.
Um, but I'm just saying, I, I didn't want, I don't think the budget committee should cut that just because they cut hours to to help with the operating budget. That's my opinion. If you'd like me to come back to that meeting with something different.
Well, you should just attend a public hearing because it's next week anyway.
Sure.
But I don't get the increase from five to thirteen thousand for the supply line?
That was the.
That was, yeah, that was the extra eight thousand dollars. So they came up with thirty-eight thousand, thirty thousand went into, that was just a line item that they picked because that each individual facility is broken out separately, so they just wanted eight thousand dollars to go back in the building, so they just said, we'll just stick it in this random line item.
But that's. Is that what that ma- maintenance equipment supplies is? Okay.
Yeah.
I thought that was material equipment and supplies.
No, it's the whole. We couldn't figure out which line item to put it to, so at least it's gonna go into the function, so.
So they just shifted money around because.
They shifted money around.
Where, I mean, from where we were to where they are.
The entire budget review through this season has been specifically thinking about those, those functional items, not necessarily line by line, but at this particular meeting, they went line by line.
Which over the public hearing, we'll, we'll go through it and I think it sounds like the budget committee supported, well, well, I know we did because we all voted. Um, support the budget that was, that you're looking at right now, that will be presented at the public hearing next week. I did remind them that we can shift function to function.
It's just kind of a, like, like John said, kind of an insult to say, oh, take that away and put it in a bill like we've ever, uh, been short on building maintenance or anything.
Well, I think it was, well, no, I mean, they asked and actually Mr. Decker answered the question, it was, um, you know, the priority for, for the town as far as improvements is, you know, because roads, we haven't had money for two years to do the roads. Well, we didn't have the two years ago and last year we didn't have the money, but is, what's the priority and where could, where would they, where should they put more money? And so then that's what was decided upon, which is a go line.
To put it towards maintenance.
Yep, maintenance and, maintenance and roads.
Right.
And again, I can't disagree with the maintenance level because replacing this building is not feasible or wanna be feasible inside.
Cut out legacy leaded program altogether?
They thought that that could be funded out of, uh, rec revolving.
Well. I don't think they've done a terrible job at what they did for, I mean.
Again, it, it was just moving things around.
No, and again, I think that's.
The same.
From the contention that we would've had two or three years ago on this, I think that's.
Well, I, I think number one is having the presentation that we had in August with NHMA coming out and sort of discussing the budget committee role and the default budget. What you can and can't do, um, was helpful and then starting the process looking at the actual state budget which submitted to the DRA versus what you're looking at.
So there are three hundred and forty-five dollars less than what we had proposed. So.
I don't know what we're gonna discuss with the amount of money.
I guess.
Huh?
Well, we, it's kind of done because the budget committee voted, it's, this is the budget that we're gonna be working with as long as it gets approved by the, um, voters, so.
Right, unless we wanted to put, if we felt strongly enough, we could still say this was our recommendation at this and it would show up in that column.
Right.
So that's really the only difference.
At our next meeting when we vote, yeah.
So. Do we just wanna accept their recommendation to us?
Well, there's nothing we have to accept really, because we're gonna vote
Right.
in three weeks.
Right, well, I mean, I mean, it's just our column. What do we wanna put in our column?
Right.
Well, we do that in three weeks.
We do that.
We do that in three weeks?
Correct. At our next meeting.
I thought we did that before, I thought that we did that before, but okay.
After the public hearing, then we vote which Warren articles include the operating budget.
Okay.
And then that gets recorded for the amendment. Helen is getting clarification as far as, because the budget committee can't recommend an operating budget including Warren articles that's over the four percent tax count.
Right.
Is, well, if a Warren article gets added in or if. Is, well, if a Warren article gets added in or if something's amended at deliberative, and then the Budget Committee meets afterwards, like, how can we vote?
Deliberative session can override the tax cap, so then how do the Budget Committee recommendations work beyond that? Because they have a session scheduled immediately after deliberative session to change any recommendations for changes that might come up during deliberative session, so.
But it's not...
I understand, and they can only, they normally would write to not approve it. They can't change it, but they can change their vote to say, "We don't approve this."
Right, but my question to Alan was that, well, how do you, so how does, how do you force Tim to say no? And John to say yes? Or how do you work those votes to come to a no? And then the wording isn't very clear as far as that recommendation is, what point is that recommendation by the Budget Committee? Is it to the deliberative? And then beyond the deliberative, I mean, the voters at that point, deliberative session, had made, had made their choice. And then we, as a Budget Committee, can then, can we just recommend yes? Even though it's over the 4% cap, tax cap now, we had recommended what's presented at deliberative at 4%. So Alan's gonna work on getting some clarification, because I was confused, I'm confused, I'm like, "So how do we just pick the votes? Okay, who wants to vote no and who wants to vote yeah?" I mean, I'd like to vote yes, but it has to be a no vote.
Right, and it has to be on the ballot, because we voted to have...
You had to have the tallies.
The recommendations tallied on the ballot.
Right.
So, yeah, this is confusing with the SB2, and I'm not sure if they've...
I don't think they can present at deliberative something greater than 4%.
Right.
That, that, once those two meetings happen, from my understanding, that's what they present. Now the will of the voters changes at the deliberative. So, and they can, they can, they can go back, but the point was they can't present something at deliberative greater than 4%.
Well, that's what we're trying to get clarified.
Right, just to make sure...
That wording isn't clear. The RSA, it's not clear to say that rec, when did they make that recommendation? Is it for deliberative for SB2? Or is that on ballot?
There's never been that problem before, probably. Well, normally, it doesn't get...
Uh, we're up in the air right now for two saving the petition Warren article deadline. We could have several monetary value articles that come in that are going to surpass the 4% that... I mean, we're not quite at 4% right now with the operating budget and the Warren articles, but it's not gonna take much, it's gonna take 50, what, $5,200? $5,200 to put us at that 4%, so let's say a $10,000 Warren article comes in to be raised by taxation, we're over the cap. So does then that petition Warren article, because of its monetary value, requires the tally system have to go on as a non-recommendation, because it can't meet the cap?
I would say that is correct. I, that, that would be my expectation anyway, because it still goes on the ballot, just...
Right, it has to go on the ballot.
Recommendation from the Budget Committee.
Clear as mud?
Sure, absolutely.
Clarification by our next meeting.
Sure, everybody at home understands exactly what we just talked about.
I know. You're not at home, Steve.
Yeah. Not asking.
If you guys keep on meeting, it's a long meeting, and I am at home. Okay.
So we're all good with the budget?
I guess.
Well, I mean, there's nothing we're changing, honestly, I'm gonna say.
Again, I encourage, I encourage everybody to attend the public hearing on Tuesday.
What time?
7:00 PM.
Conference Room 1, this is the one. Alright, well, that ends that part.
In short of adding the Warren article for the greater, there are no other Warren articles other than the one being proposed by Pataquei Lake for the water quality study, which will be a zero impact. Are there any other Warren articles that you would like to propose as I'm putting it forward for legal review in terms of, you know, perhaps adding agents to expend or anything to clean up processes? Transfer back to a town meeting, go back to our three-member Board of Selectmen? Just throwing a couple of ideas out there for you.
I think getting clarification on which funds that we have the ability to spend from first before.
Yeah, but...
Going what we can and can't first before making any changes. It's the first time, I think, it's been an issue. I've only been on board two years, but...
I don't have any suggestions, so, good to go.
Discussion's been had.
Love to go back to town meeting, personally.
Well, there's a petition Warren article for that.
I know there is. Is there one this year?
No, but there is. You just have to write it up and submit it.
Change what it said before.
I know that that's been tried.
Two-thirds vote, I believe.
It is like a two-thirds or three-fifths, one of those.
Advisory committees?
Oh, advisory committees, yes. Just dusting off old, we talked about formation of Advisory Committee for the Recycling Center. Maybe either revamping or bringing back the Facilities Committee, just, you know, ideas and oversight.
I was against it before, so it doesn't matter unless you guys think of something else.
I mean, the facilities one is now kind of wrapped up through the Facility Director position, right? We had the committee, and they came up with a bunch of stuff, and were like, "We can't handle this. We have a position," and he's chewing through the mulch pile. I don't know if that, we would just be having people looking at the exact same thing. Recycling, if, I mean, that one, maybe to try to, if somebody wants to beat through, trying to make it more efficient, but recycling is not actually as recycling as people think. I mean, they're just not accepting anything anymore. It's like two types of, three types of plastic.
We had...
And limited heavily what they take. They're not taking paper, so that just sits in the dumpster and we sell it for cheaper.
But there's, there's other programs that are available too, like they're, they're testing out recycling mattresses, which could be pretty cool. Is I think just, you know, having somebody that could attend NHMA events.
NRA.
NR, I'm sorry, NRA, stuff that might be a member of the public, but that would be interested, "Hey, I, you know, I'm passionate about recycling, yeah, I'd love to attend those events." And then come back to the committee and talk about, "Okay, what can we do to work with Recycling Center staff to make this place more efficient?" Or are there other ideas, composting or any other things that we can implement that would help?
Yeah.
That was my idea behind it, and other towns have them, so it didn't seem like it was out of the ordinary. There's a lot of towns that have recycling committees.
Not affecting our budget at all, so.
No, and I think if we're trying to get public buy-in on...
Right.
I don't get how we, the wood doesn't get, that's a commodity that some places burn, like, I mean, it's...
There's a town next door that still burns. Not gonna point it out, because I don't think it's supposed to be, but...
No, but there's, if you look online, the...
Are you talking about like active incinerators?
Yeah, like the grid, like waste management burns wood as a fuel source to make a small amount of electricity, to make like 150 megawatts out of it, but...
If anybody has used motor oil that they've used or changing your ATVs or your boat motor oil, you're looking a way to get rid of it, the town does accept it, we use it to burn our, to heat the facility, which saves your tax dollars, so.
And they are running low.
Don't be afraid to bring it.
What's that?
They are running low. They have less used waste oil than they've had in years past.
A lot of people probably aren't changing their oils like they used to doing stuff, so. Nottingham, it's your tax dollars.
Did have a gentleman that emailed me about wanting, inquiring community energy to convert the whole town over to this community energy program. You start an advisory board on that, look at outsourcing energy sources?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
So there's a lot of other companies out there, instead of going through public service or Hampshire Co., there's private individual companies that sell power. They buy it from public service, but then they resell it to the consumers at a supposedly a lower price.
How do you buy, how do you buy from the source and sell less from the source?
I know, it doesn't make any sense to me, but they're out there.
It's out there.
There are, there's a lot of suppliers. They actually, they have them listed on the state website, the various suppliers that are available to consumers.
Well, even when you select Eversource, you can go on and select different suppliers. It's not gonna pay Eversource, but you can select solar. I'm not sure how they deliver solar energy through the same damn line that my neighbor has if I select solar, but...
It does not guarantee, you are just increasing your, you're saying that you want your money diverted to help develop solar, but you're not getting solar power delivered to you.
The smoke and mirrors.
Right.
John, I wanna go back to what you said. What do they use, use motor oil for?
We have a waste oil heater.
A wa, okay.
So you're, you're, motor oil from your boat engine, from your ATV, from your snowmobile, from your car, used motor oil, uh, we use at the recycling center to heat the building.
So, and there's no charge for that? We can bring it?
Yeah. All you need to do is, it has to be in a container, and it has to have your name and your address on it so that they know, when they pour it in, if it's half-full with water.
I usually, I usually put Mr. Moran's name and phone number and address online, so if there's any issues...
Sure.
I'll hear about it.
Speaking of that, don't give people ideas.
Too late.
Did anybody address, they said they're having trouble with the transfer pump up there?
The transfer pump? As far as the hand pump?
To transfer from one tank to the other tank. Had a hard time getting this started the other day.
On the waste oil?
Yeah.
I was up there this morning, they didn't mention it.
No, they're rather complaining after you're gone.
Probably.
It's not the truth.
So anyways, so back to the advisory committees. I just think that it'd be a good way to get future buy-in, especially, I mean, the facilities, I mean, they did a lot of work two years ago. I'm not saying that Alan can't, or, you know, if we continue with the Facility Director, they can't continue to work on things, but...
I think that's a bit different than what Alan's doing too.
Right.
It's more of just...
Like even just thinking about the back room is, okay, if you have that, looking at that, looking at other things that we need and say, "Hey, we thought about this," and come to, back to the select board and say, "Have you thought about these ideas?"
But does that need to go on a Warren article?
No, no, no.
You're just saying you want to...
It's just a matter of, you know, whether or not you want to advertise it and see if there's any community interest.
We can do that anytime.
Right, but we, no, we already talked about this in October, but we said we'd do it after the first year. We are now after the first year, so we want to...
This is never gonna end.
Tim, I'm gonna break it up for the next damn minute, because you got to...
If you're passionate, you spearhead, go right ahead, man.
I'm not opposed to having the committees formed. I actually said I would do the facilities one.
I wasn't gonna bring that back up, because you and I seem to be the only two that remember this conversation.
Why are children, they're definitely, it doesn't matter, so.
But, yes, we need community involvement. So if there's people that are willing to do it...
So do you need a motion to just throw that, you're just gonna post?
No, just put something on.
Like we did, and then we end up with friends of...
A volunteer committee or whatever, I'll have them do a volunteer application.
Make sure the committee knows when we do get it assigned, that whatever they have for suggestions, it doesn't cost anything to do it.
Right.
Since there's no money to do whatever.
Well, eventually it would probably cost stuff, you know, but then it becomes...
Well, then it could be, follow the CIP, or again, it gets brought up, at least brought up to us.
Exactly, which is why, right, it would go part, become part of the CIP or whatever, and...
Alright, so, we're gonna move ahead with an advisory committee?
Yep, sounds good.
For recycling?
Sounds like both, and facilities.
You really think we need the facilities?
Yeah, I mean...
I would like, you know, I guess somebody actually taking away of how we can improve our recycling center to make it more efficient and more cost-effective. Because it's just a sieve of money every year, it keeps getting bigger and bigger, uh, for this town. If you notice in the reports and you go look at, from year to year, it just keeps costing more and more money to run that place, which is just affecting everybody's tax dollar, so...
So you agree?
I, if, if they can get it done for nothing, sure, but I don't think it's gonna happen, but, not to be negative, but...
Well, at least if they bring ideas back.
Absolute, absolute, ideas, that, that's all it's about.
I'm happy to head the recycling...
There you go.
Mr. Decker, if you want to do the, uh, facilities, and we can go from there, and if you guys want to jump on board, more the merrier. You gotta be so jealous and...
And you want to put that on the website that we're looking for people to do?
Yes.
Thank you.
The other thing that I forgot to mention since we're talking about website is I wanted to put back out another ad for surplus equipment, maybe try and give another stab at the hydraulic sander that isn't gonna work for us anymore in the highway department, that stainless one, and potentially the police department ATV. And whatever else I can find from other departments that we're maybe not using that could be useful to somebody else and...
So did I miss something, did the hydraulic sander something, whatever? We're not using it now?
We're, yeah, we're not going to be using it because the plumbing or the acceptance, all that stuff is rotten on the truck, so having to replace that, it's...
Gotcha.
So it's good on, it's good on the sander, but not on the truck?
Correct.
If we were to advertise the ATV, you gonna do that as a sealed bid, or do you think it's gonna...
That would be the intention. I think...
So we're gonna get a bunch of people offering us like a dollar?
Maybe.
Sweet.
That would be a goal, too.
That's not sealed.
I mean, a live auction would be fun.
Yeah, it would be. We could do a live auction for two items.
Well, it should probably wait till after the new one arrives, since there's no really budget to have, I mean...
Of course.
The money doesn't really make a difference.
She believe the asset is not viable to them anymore? It's still sn, it's smaller and nimble compared to the big one, it's still provide, whatever.
It's storage space too, where they're gonna put it, once they put the new one in the shed, they have no place to stick it, so it's just gonna sit outside, and so it's another...
Copy that.
So I mean, put it out for an initial round, see what we get for bids on it? I mean, you have the right to refuse any and all.
Sure, I mean, I just don't know if it's not, whether it's important to do it now or whether you wait two months to do it when we get the new one again, it's...
How do you post those bids?
Um, I usually, I'll, I'll post them at our regular posting locations on the town's website. Usually if it's a piece of, like, larger equipment that maybe another municipality could use, I'll post it on the NHMA classifieds.
Craigslist?
What's that? No, we stay away from Craigslist.
Why? If it's a sealed bid?
Right, yeah, I guess you could.
I mean, that's what I was gonna suggest, is like Facebook Marketplace and...
Look at that.
And Craigslist, if they're coming in as sealed bids, we don't have to worry about the spammers.
We just open ourselves a more public comment about it, but...
Okay, just don't, no comments.
Sure. About the Facebook extraordinary...
I'm no Facebook expert, believe me.
Yeah, am I. Action items?
There was some of them.
We're gonna get a public hearing, we've gotta vote on our Warren articles.
Yeah. So add those for our...
The 27.
27?
You have that town warrant to sign, the MS 730, well, no, the 737 gets signed by the Budget Committee, but...
Uh, do we have it on public?
We do.
Okay, but before we go there, we will open up the public comment. We will open up public comment right now. Any public comment? Mr. Bates?
Doug Bates, 30 Lamprey. There's rumor that the Board of Selectmen have received a demand letter. Rumor true?
Demand letter?
Mm-hmm.
Technical or something, or?
Uh, yeah, it's typically preliminary to like a defamation lawsuit.
I'll answer that question, though.
Um, I can say that there was correspondence that was received in non-public session at our last meeting on December 23rd. That information has not been released, because it has been referred to legal.
So the public document that we can 91A?
Um, not at this time. It's part of a sealed minutes record.
Okay.
And it was not a missle per the 91A, what'd you say?
For which one?
For the release 91A.
32A E. 91A 32. Um, the, the document was part of sealed minutes from the last non-public session.
Any other public comment? We were moving into our non-public, and after that, we will leave non-public and we will close the meeting.
Make a motion to move into non-public per RSA 91A colon 32AC and L.
Second?
We have a motion, second, roll call, vote.
Aye, Steve Welch.